I call this meeting to order and ask the clerks, please, call the roll.
Trustee Erins?
Here.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item on the agenda for the committee of the whole meetings that are planning and zoning, for Chairman Cammerer.
Thank you, President Wallace. Tonight we have a impervious surface standards for single-family zoning districts text amendment. And with that, I would like to have Jim go ahead and give us the background on this.
Thank you, Trustee Cammerer. This section of the zoning ordinance is part of Chapter 5. The rest of the section of Chapter 5, which is the residential districts in the zoning ordinance, will be given to you at a later date, but we thought we'd start with the impervious surface part. Several years ago, when we started doing the comprehensive update of the zoning ordinance, we identified 15 zoning issues that were needed to be addressed in the revisions of the zoning ordinance. And as we go through updating each chapter, these items are addressed in those different chapters. As you know, we've just completed Chapter 4, which was the rezoning of some of the I-1 and the SR-1 properties, and eliminating some of the zoning districts in the I-2 district also. The six items that we've identified that are listed here, updating accessory uses, updating fences, specifying home occupations, incorporating dog runs, and doing those, eliminating those non-conforming properties, we've done as we've gone through the four chapters. This next big policy issue is the impervious surface for single-family homes, and as I stated, it's in the residential districts section of the Chapter 5. We did that because we have just spent a lot of money improving our stormwater detention throughout the community. We've updated the stormwater management and floodplain ordinances from DuPage County recently, and Brian's updated building code will reference those updated stormwater management requirements for single-family homes, as well as this section of impervious surface. The long and short of the impervious surface regulations, the purposes actually are on page two. We believe that impacting drainage numerous impervious surface structures reduce the permeable area on lots and can create drainage problems on lots and neighboring lots, and have a cumulative effect in particularly in the older neighborhoods in the community. We will create standards that will apply to all structures on the entire lot and preserve the neighborhood character by reducing nuisance structures and maintaining the aesthetics of the yard. We'll preserve green space increases, preserving the green spaces that the impervious surface limits will allow, will improve the quality of water runoff collected in the village stormwater system, and help the environment and vegetation. And it also regulates teardowns, which at the time we started this were going to be a big issue, and they haven't been, but it limits the amount of lots' coverage you can have in a particular single-family district. This has gone, at least as a policy, through the village board committees and the zoning board previously, but now this is actually the text amendment in the ordinance form, which is on page four. And what I've done, basically, the impervious surface standards would be based on your lot square footage. For 20,000-square-foot lots or greater, it would be 30 percent. Equal to 10,800, but less than 20,000, it would be 35 percent. Less than 20,000, it'd be 45 percent. And less than 10,800, it would, 40 percent, and less than 10,800, it would be 45 percent, or 40 percent on those lots, and 45 percent on the duplex lots. And what I've given you in the slides are some examples of, this is particularly a larger lot in the ER-3 district, which would have a 30 percent impervious surface. This particular lot is almost at the 30 percent. If they wanted to put another impervious surface on this property, they would have to reduce the size of the driveway, or reduce, or not do it, or reduce some of the swimming pool area, or the area around the swimming pool. This is a typical 30 percent impervious surface lot. This is an example of a lot size that's 11,320 in our SR-2 district. The impervious surface allowed would be 35 percent on the proposed ordinance. This lot would be at 30 percent. So they could do some additional impervious surface without having to remove any area. Another example in the SR-2, at 31 percent, where the maximum would be 35 percent, again, they'd have some wiggle room. We tried to evaluate all the residential lots in the village and come up with a number that wouldn't be punitive to somebody who had an existing home and allow them to do some expansion. This particular one is in a smaller SR-3 lot. Again, the maximum would be increased at 40 percent, and they are at 35. So you can kind of see the areas that would still remain open, but they would still have some ability. This is another SR-3, where it has a 35 percent lot coverage or impervious surface, and they would be allowed 40 percent. So they have room to do some other improvements. This one here is a smaller lot. It's a 7,800-square-foot lot. They could go to 40 percent, and they are at 36 percent. So you could still do some additional improvement. If, just for example, if they were at 40 percent, a space like this brick patio, you can't see the word on it, but this brick patio might have to be reduced if they wanted to, say, like, put a gazebo or something up on it, they'd have to, if they were at the maximum. So there's going to be some equations and calculations.
In my reading, Jim, I may be wrong here, but I thought impervious pavement didn't include brick paver patios, because the water could go through the brick paver patio.
It depends on how they're constructed. You're right, on some, on some brick pavers, they have those, for example, we've got grass crete parking spaces up on Oak Avenue. Those are pavers that allow the bricks to go through. On your typical brick patio, it's not, it is impervious, where there's not an ability for that gap to, it just runs off, just like an asphalt parking lot. So there are brick patios that you can put in that allow the grass to grow through and gaps in there, and that you can do and install that would be an example of considered impervious surface. They're not all that way, though.
And I, I'm not questioning what you say, but are there studies that show that brick and asphalt really have the same degree of imperviousness, if you want to call it that?
Oh, good new word. We, there are, and that's why when DuPage County recommends certain types of brick pavers to put in your yard, and there are different ones that you can use.
Typically, permeable brick material can be depending, it's depending on the base, and a lot of them will use it in their parking lots. The school district, for example, in Woodridge, not all their school parking lots, but the depth is total tear-out of like 24 inches, where they install an underdrain underneath those impervious bricks, and then it allows the drain without creating structures and basically taking oils and stuff off. It's a different type. This is more of a shallower base material that you have, which becomes a permeable surface, impervious surface, so it basically doesn't drain into the brick.
And most of your brick patios have about six or eight inches of compacted material underneath gravel and sand that, they're just as hard as anything.
If they don't have that, they're not brick patios long.
Yeah, they just wiggle a lot.
But to get down to brass tacks, so to speak, when a resident comes into the village and is asking for a building permit for, you know, putting in one of these patios, would you then be in a position to help steer them towards a pervious material or design?
We would, we would use the requirements or information that we get from DuPage County, they provide a lot, as well as work with them and try to figure out what they can do. But that's something that we have to put in practice. We've just, you know, we've been just writing the ordinance, but there's a lot of different suggested materials that they can use, types of way they can install things, that we would be helpful in getting them to that point.
Is there a, and you may get to this, is there a percentage of infraction upon this already within the village that, what percentage of the village would surpass their allotted percentage? You follow what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying. That's a good question, and I, off the top of my head, I can't give you that, but there are people who are, who do surpass the standards that we're even putting in. And we are a little more relaxed than some of other communities. Some communities, you know, just stay 35 percent across the board. We did that calculation, but I'll find that out for you.
But I guess the bottom line on that is, they would be legal non-conforming under our ordinance, right? Assuming this passes, they'd be legal non-conforming. So unless there was some kind of change, they wouldn't have to make any modifications. They'd be able to enjoy that non-conformity for however long.
Oh, that's correct, yes. Just like any zoning variance we do.
But what if they were to sell their house to someone else? Would that, would they be required to change that, to conform to the ordinance, to sell their house?
No, they wouldn't. Most of the time, your title companies aren't going to pick that up. It would only be really when they would come in to do something for improving it, and then, or expanding the home. That's when you'd catch it.
Seems to be most of the same questions you had in 2008.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could go through that history. And then just, just another example of an SR-4 lot. This one's at 40 percent, and the SR-4 would be 40 percent. So this person would be a good example where they would have to eliminate some of that if they wanted to expand their impervious area. And then another example where this one is a duplex, and it's allowed to go to 45 percent, and they're at 38 percent. And then this, another duplex, where they're at 40 percent, and they're allowed to go 45. So those are examples of where we're going with this, the percentages that we've calculated by doing the research throughout the community, and it's here before you, prior to moving on to the zoning board of appeals to conduct the public hearing on the text amendment. Do you have any questions? Any more questions, I'll try to answer them.
Anyone in the board have a question?
And this is going to apply only to the single-family lots?
Single-family and duplexes, yes. The multifamily, we pick up in our site plan review, and that's why, so multifamily go through the site plan review, and then typically, when we do the multifamily new developments, they have their own detention areas, too. But we try to, you know, improve with the multifamily homes, we try to make sure that they have to meet our stormwater requirements, not only on the whole development, but also the drainage swales going to the stormwater areas.
Okay, and you have other restrictions with regards to commercial and industrial?
We didn't implement those on commercial and industrial. Again, through our site plan review process, they have to provide onsite detention, and as Brian will tell you and Paul, the new DuPage County stormwater ordinance is getting really tough on existing single-family lots, as well as they have to do onsite detention in some cases. But we picked those up, again, the commercial and industrial, through our site plan review process.
Jim, I have a question on the two-story residence example that you gave here. It's not page numbered, but...
In the duplex?
Second one. You've got a lot size of 11,320. Just glancing at this, I mean, some people like bigger driveways, whatever, but this, in this situation, these people could not even, they could increase their patio a little bit, but, I mean, it's, they only have, doing a little math here, they only have 498 square feet left to do anything, which is...
Threat 30 percent, and they could go to 35.
Right. You mean, what's the square footage of an average decent-sized patio? At least 700 square feet, I would think, or 800?
They would have to, they would have to come in, and on this particular one, they have excessively wide driveway that kind of goes, and the house is pretty big, so they would have to do something, or either, or either reduce the amount, or go to some type of impervious material in the patio or the driveway that they have.
Sparingly placed flagstones. Jim, they could always request a variance, correct?
Yeah. Can always apply for variance.
Do we have any idea the percentage of folks that are going to be out of compliance in our village, if this, something like this goes through, with these percentages?
I'll have, I don't know that. We did that, when we calculated it.
I think that's probably a big number.
We'll have to come back, I'll have to get that number for you.
I think, I think the letter...
There are quite a few.
Yeah. I think the letter D here is very important, as far as part of the ordinance here, just because, you know, we've all seen villages where, where especially...
Tear-downs could go lots to lots.
Yeah, Elmers, they tear down this little house, and they slam up this big one, and so, but some of these other things seem to be, could create a lot of work down the road. Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, is, this is a part of the ongoing stormwater issue, right?
It's an ongoing stormwater management issue, is what it is.
Okay.
And more, more hard service, the water has to run out someplace, so more, more hard service, you can add more work.
And not to get too far off-base, but one of the other points there is preserving green spaces, but another part was maintaining aesthetics of a yard. I know there's a few yards around the area that have...
Basketball courts.
Or something, yeah.
Yeah. That's, those are, those are problem ones, if they wanted to expand that. We have a few of those where, you know, the whole yard is basically impervious. And, you know, that's, that's why, that's where it leads to problems, in particular in neighborhoods, because the typical house that is designed in a subdivision, is designed for the house, the driveway, and they don't take into account too much else. They don't take into account the big patios, the pools, and those types of things, in your bigger detention areas. And that's what is found in some of these towns, you know, they got a detention area, and you got all this impervious surface, and it still exceeds the detention.
Well, is there any other questions? Then, the intended, is this going to the zoning board then, again?
Yes, for the public hearing, correct.
For the public hearing, then, I guess I would ask that we move it on to the zoning board for the public hearing.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you, Chairman Cammerer. Next item on the committee's agenda here is the under-finance Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the 2014-2018 capital improvements plan, and I'm sure that the village staff will, in a succinct fashion, be able to present us with the information regarding the capital improvements program.
I would be happy to do that. First of all, we work on a capital improvement program in the fall, so the board has more time to carefully analyze projects that usually are fairly expensive. The first part of this program is the actual budget. This is, if you approve this, it will be the portion that will go into the operating budget in the spring. The rest of it is just a plan. It's four more years that shows you what we see coming down the line, how we see it progressing, and how much it's going to cost. So I always like to start with new projects. There are three new projects in this budget. The first one you will find on page 58. It is the inland steel drainage. That is a project that I am pleased to tell you, if you drive down South Bartlett Road, oh, no, that's Amherst Pond. This is inland steel, page 58. Paul, you want to come up, and you're going to be talking about some of these. This is shoreline repair project. Do you want to go ahead and talk about the inland steel, Paul?
The inland steel project is behind Centennial School, right down by our well, how, you've seen the ground storage tank on Sterns Road, right by the creek line. There's, the creek runs right between two different detention areas. It was built with the inland steel development off of Prospect, Grant, and Sherman Lee, the hilltop. There's a lot of destruction going on in there, a lot of settlementation going on in that. There's a head wall up by the winding creek that the water is coming down there, around the corner there, at such a big deterior, or such of a big force, it is actually eroded around the head wall on there, and not causing, letting the water shortcut around there. We've looked at doing that, we've looked at the creek line that goes through there, it's very overgrown with trees obstructing flow that goes through that. We did do, initially, we did the study there, we hired an engineering firm to evaluate all that, came up with a whole bunch of lists of what we can do, a minimum and a maximum. These are actually the minimum that we can do out there. Being the first year of the 1516, would be working around that head wall to try and stabilize that wall that's there, to hold the water back, to act as a detention pond on that. Minimal creek line cleaning throughout that area in there, and just studying the underdrain, doing some wet spots, and re-grading just in that area. The other spot is up on, along with this area that we studied, we studied even further up by the Country Drive, Brookside area, we have a lift station right in that shoreline, another, right between Country Drive and Wilcox. We have a lift station there, the erosion is so bad in there, we're real close to losing a wet well into our lift station, that's our deepest lift station. Our lift station's about 28 feet in there. This also, on our second phase of this, would be reshaping that, do some stabilization, re-establishing the creek line around a bend. Again, it's where these creeks are making such of a drastic curve, we're having such of a big erosion problems. So first year would be the, actually, at the inland steel, and the second year would be further up on Brookside, I'm sorry, between Country and Wilcox on that. Seems like a lot of money, but if we lose that, then we lose detention area all the way up north through our town. This creek line really does start up on Prospect Avenue, where we're working on our big detention pond over in the Streamwood property. This, all that water does come through this area, too.
Do you ever notice there's, Brookside and West Country, a house there has continually had to rebuild that wall to try to keep that, try to keep their backyard? It's bad.
So this is, for the next year, what we will put in the actual budget is the 50,000 for the engineering, and then you see as this goes out further, how we'll be expending those funds. The second new project is the Amherst Pond shoreline restoration, that's on page 60. That's a project that you see going in right now. It is a 50/50 with the DuPage County Highway Department, and we were able to secure the right-of-way from Commonwealth Edison, running the line down behind all those houses. It will stop the flooding in that dip in the road. Every time we have a lot of rain, we have to close off that road. This will solve that problem, as well as helping a lot of residents who are there who have a lot of water in their backyard. It'll bring it down into the creek down at the end there. So that project is, came up quickly, we were able to secure 50 percent of the funding, and that should be done.
It's actually all the pipes is in the ground, they're working on the road restoration, or the road should be done within, before Thanksgiving, and then just the final restoration of the grass and seeding at this fall, if not next spring, for sure.
The third new project in this is on page 62. It's the Devon Pond shoreline restoration. If you'll recall, a resident was in here a couple of months ago and was concerned now that the water flows much more rapidly through the forest behind her house, and continues on across Sterns and into our new project, the shoreline has showed itself, and it needs some significant amount of renovation.
Well, we did, we met with the resident out onsite after she came to the board, really looked at it with her. We were able to go in there, clean some of the overgrowth, overgrowth around the pond of her concerns, clean up along her fence line, so that she was happier with it at that point. The shoreline's stable, is, or the shoreline is eroding drastically due to the flows in there. This would actually study what we can do there, and then the following timeframe, come up with a big program to bring that shoreline stabilization back into effect, at least along her side. There's no other residents on the east side or the, or the north side, focusing on her, so that we can get in there and maintain that a lot better. The Park District has gone, is currently in the process of fixing their pond on, the larger pond on the north side of that, of the north side of Devon Avenue, using all sorts of different shoreline stabilization, and they're, they're about done with their project. Again, the resident's happy with what we've done so far, we'll just stay on it as far as the cutting of the weeds and the additional growth for this time.
Oh, is the Park District using those giant riprap cement deals that are along the road there now? Is that what they're trying to do?
Well, they're, they have some big flagstones out there, they're using a bunch of different techniques over there, yes. They are using those big flat rocks out there for some of the stabilization, close to the residents. They are also using a soil-wrapped, it's, Bob, what do they call that?
Geotek fabric wrap.
Geotek fabric wrap soil inside that, and put like big pillows in there. They're doing some other landscaping plantings. That's just to stop the, or the shoreline, to re-establish the shoreline, then they'll come in and fill some of the other areas in there. Multiple different tasks, what they're doing over there.
I'd bet like to move to the projects for the 2014-15 budget, because none of these are new projects, they're ongoing projects, but they still will show up in the next budget, and I'll walk through these quickly if I am asked to do so. We begin with water on page three. This is the Sterns Road, replacement. Do you have any comments on that, Paul?
This project was actually put on hold due to our well eight being out of service for the barium and radium. Once our barium and radium removal, and eight gets back online, then we'll be able to take this out and do the tank maintenance. The tank was originally built in 1986, it is showing some very big signs of failure on that.
Next project is on page seven, we're still in water, and that is the well number eight barium and radium removal project.
And we're still in the design stages of that. RJN Engineering Firm, we have hired those, they're designing that, we should be ready for permit, sending permit application into the IEPA, February, March at that point, with this project being bid out, spring, summertime, starting construction. Hopefully, we'll be back online with this in the fall of '14.
Just a quick question. So well eight's been offline for how long now?
Well, it's going on a full year, a year and a half now, and I'll get you the exact date, how long we've had it off.
And when it comes back online, will that take away some of our neediness from Elgin? But help us not to...
Some of our consumption from Elgin?
Yes.
No. What we've been able to do, no. We still are currently taking our minimum from Elgin, what we're required to take. We will not be able to take less than that, because we are meeting our minimum on that. We've been able to use our other wells that we currently had, actually running those more to accommodate with eight being out of service.
Do we have other options that we can look at when it comes to the wells and our association with Elgin, or, you know, just something, that's a big cost to the village, obviously, and something that I think, you know, we'd like to see reduced, or something we could contain ourselves, or do ourselves, if it was all possible? I don't know if it is or not.
We've been looking at that for about a year. We have some contract numbers coming up, and so we'll be reviewing that in the near future with the board.
All right, okay. All right, thanks.
Excuse me, the next one is our water main replacement on page nine.
We have a couple of sections of water main that are typically failing quite frequently with main breaks in that, we've identified two other, two areas here, San Diego Place, it's just notorious for multiple main breaks, soil conditions or the age of that, age of the pipe. The area up by Queens Parkway on South Hickory, that is an age issue up by the fire station and we'll just do those for the next couple of years. We'll do San Diego, actually this current, we're trying to get that done this spring yet and then following up the next year, we would do Queens Parkway Hickory before we do the road projects like that.
Page 11 is the water tower painting for Kent Circle and Fort Nida.
We have a couple of water towers that are in dire need of painting, we have the two, two of the elevated towers here earmarked over the next couple of years for painting. Painting does get very expensive, new process on that. If there is no lead paint or if there is, lead paint is another issue. Total encapsulation of all the sandblasting, you'll see, if, you'll see that they have to come down and put a tent over the whole entire water tower while there's sandblasting to eliminate the debris from flying out, especially when you're in the residential area or in the commuter areas, it's pretty cabinet.
And do we have any painted with lead?
Hockey puck.
We don't know.
Uh, we probably, we could.
Is that 1975 or something they stopped?
Yeah, I'm not sure what paint it was. There is a good chance there, Kent Circle will still have lead paint on that.
What impact does that have on?
Just more encapsulation, dust control, all the material that comes down, you have to put a blanket down, cover that, ventilate it. The same technique for both of them, just a little bit more caution where you, where you dispose of that.
What does it do to the cost, that's my question?
Adds.
It does definitely add additional costs for that, but I, I think we, we're pretty well covered with these costs and-
So, you're telling me that if it's lead, we're fine, if it's not lead, you're gonna come, you're gonna come in quite a bit less?
We would hope so.
Okay.
Any cool colors?
We'll let you pick.
We're gonna paint it just like your tie.
That's all for the water fund, sewer fund projects for next year begin on page 16 and it is our phosphorus removal.
The early indications, phosphorus removal will be added on to our next permit, when our, when our permit is up, our permit is up for renewal for 1516, I'm sorry, it's up for, for the end of 15 it's up, they usually give you 12 months after that fact to get in operations. We're hearing that other communities are getting phosphorus, limitations upon their permit, if that's the, the case, we will have to have this program in place. That's what we have for next year, engineering to evaluate that.
Continuing in the sewer fund on page 20, we have the sanitary sewer system evaluation.
What we've been doing for the past year now is we have a sanitary sewer evaluation program. We have a lot of stormwater, water runoff into our storm sewers, what we've done is we've taken our older area of town, being the north end, right around the, the village hall to the west, we're doing, we've done an evaluation of that to see if we're failing, if our sewers are failing or our manholes are failing to see where we are at this time. Our evaluation so far is that our, our manholes are in great condition, our sewer systems, our sewer lines, we're seeing some failures with that. The next step what we're doing with that is we're going out, we are out for bid for a sewer TV program of these two sections of town. Once we do the sewer TV and get the evaluation or get the, get the tapes for the sewers, which is very interesting watching, we'll evaluate what kind of conditions they are and do spot repairs on that. It's an ongoing project and we'll do this for numerous years. So, we'll TV the sewers on this northern of town, do some spot repairs as we need to do.
That's all for the sewer department, next we have five projects in the streets, the first is on page 23 and that is for sidewalk installations.
We've identified areas of town that, there's sidewalks missing or there's gaps in our sidewalks. This one is through, on Sterns Road from the Bittersweet Trillium over Forest Reserve property over to the Windsor Drive. We are working with the Forest Reserve to get an easement through their property at this point. It looks very positive that we should acqui, should accomplish that sooner than what we anticipated and we should be able to move forward with this project.
We were able to point out that their new dog facility they're going to have there will generate a whole lot more people walking and perhaps us putting in the sidewalk as an easement and not paying for it, which was the request before, would facilitate that, so we're feeling that we'll be able to get that easement this year.
And this is just a continuation of concrete sidewalks, it's not like the, a bike path or anything of that nature?
No, this, this side would only be sidewalks going into subdivision, the north side of Streamd Road, there is a bike, bike path network already on that side. The Trillium and Bittersweet kids, the children that are in that subdivision are not even allowed to walk to Centennial School because there's no continuous sidewalk, they have to be bused in to- So, we, we looked at this quite a few years ago, ran into the stumbling block of the Forest Reserve, we've backed over that hurdle and that will help those residents going to, into that, that school. It'll also get them over to Tallgrass where we have a traffic signal that we will be able to cross Tallgrass or Sterns Road at Tallgrass with a pedestrian crosswalk allowing them to get to the bike path. And again, right on the, right on the east side of Bittersweet is where the new dog park is, so it'll help our network as well.
Do you think it'll be installed before school next year? August-ish?
Sure.
Maybe. That would be my ultimate goal.
I would hope that that's the target, yeah.
That would be my ultimate goal is sometime next summer to get this done. The, the dog park is not scheduled to open up until September of 14. So, I do believe that it will fall into that same timeframe.
Dex Street Project is page 25, probably the oldest project in the capital budget, West Bartlett Road Naperville Bike Path.
When the county did do their portion, rebuilt West Bartlett Road, west of 59, they did add a lot of the bike path along West Bartlett Road and also they headed up on, headed west on, I'm sorry, north on Naperville Road to the end of their limits. This would extend the bike path northerly across the vacant property, across the dirt road tracks, tying it into Spalding Road. We still have some stumbling blocks there, we still have some vacant property, we'd like to get easements, but we need the cooperation from the property ownership of that.
Can we find all those people from Amber Grove that we promised this bike path to about 20 years ago?
Yeah.
Find them and tell them this is your village at work.
Yeah, this, this is probably the single biggest thing I'm questioned about as a trustee.
Are the gold bricks that we're making the-
Is when our, when are we getting our bike path? So, and I know we've talked about it before and I, I understand the intricacies, I'm just, as a trustee, this is probably the one thing that people come to me the most on.
The next project is page 39 and that is our ongoing road project. Roadway maintenance, 39.
This is our road bond project, next year will be in our third year, the final, third and final year of our three-year project. To date, first year, first year we did 18 miles of resurfacing, last year we did 32 miles of road where it left. My projection next year is 20, pushing 25 miles. Our original projection on this project for the $12 million bond was 40 miles of road. Right at this point, we're going to be getting somewhere between 70 and 75 miles of road that will have resurfaced throughout that town, throughout the whole entire town. For the 141 miles, it's not hard to say, half of our streets will be paved within three years. Definitely pleased with that, the village really needed that boost and getting our roads up there and very happy to say that, I'm very happy that our costs have come in and fantastic project.
Page 39, that we just talked about, the IDNR bike path links on page 41, we're still working on those.
There's two different sections out west of town, two different subdivisions that we can tie the bike paths into the Hayfield State Park where the bike paths are there. They have pathways in there, Jim working with some grants, trying to get grants to tie this in there. It'll tie two subdivisions, grade subdivisions into that, tie us all into our ballpark way out west of town.
The next one is Route 20 Improvements on page 43.
So, Route 20 project, they are working from Oak Avenue East to Parker Boulevard, that's phase one, that is the only project that they're working on right now, or that they are going to be working on. Starts east of Oak Avenue going again up to Parker Boulevard, lighting that, putting the sidewalks on the north side on the Streamwood Parcels. They're building shelves only on the south side in Bartlett for future sidewalks. If that, if that property develops completely, we'll be able to provide paths. Our portion of that is a traffic signal relocation at Oak, east side of Oak Avenue at the, at the cost of $2,600. When they do from Oak Avenue to the west, then we will get into intersection modifications, possibly a, a left, excuse me, a right turn lane dedicated onto Oak, but both traffic signals will be modernized at that point. Someday down the future, they do not have that west phase of that project planned yet.
Or funded. Page 46 starts our economic development improvements and the first one is the Brewster Creek Public Improvements, which is part of our TIP project. Jim, you want to do that one?
This is a continuation of our public improvements or infrastructure improvements in Brewster Creek. You can see that we have, we've been working with the developer to identify some of the street repavement, resurfacing, you've seen a little bit of that work going on, that's going to carry on for the next couple of years and it's reflected in the roadway costs there. There are also some additional, they have to continue their wetland mitigation and also the site preparation and earthwork for any future site development. We're expecting some more development along the Shifro Road area on the south side as well as north on where Brewster Creek Boulevard and Humboldt come around, where Ryan Scott is still, we're expecting some more development there as well as where Ron is at. So, that earthwork figure will cover some of that.
The next one, next page 48 and that is the Bluff City Heron Public Improvements. Jim, you want to take that one as well?
Bluff City is also a TIP district on the west end of town. We're seeing a lot more of activity in, in both the, what we call the Blue Heron Site, which is the north side of West Bartlett Road, but particular around the Southwind Boulevard part of the south of West Bartlett Road. As you recall, last year we approved an amendment for their annexation agreement and their development plan. They are going to finish Southwind Boulevard, which comes up, comes out of Polar Field, it'll be swung north and connect to West Bartlett Road as well as build a new road called Benchmark Lane somewhere in that area, just about 400, 200 feet south of, of West Bartlett Road that will parallel rest of West Bartlett Road. And we've got some increased activity for some commercial sites on that site. So, that, that area south of West Bartlett Road will be redeveloped roads, fairly well reclaimed. On the north end, you're going to see additional reclamation work in that Blue Heron area and they are marketing those sites, nothing's been gone, nothing's gone for sale yet, but we hope that they'll start building on that side too.
Page 51, we move into golf and we have one continuing golf project, Bob?
Yes, this project is the second half of our car path improvement program. This will be basically the back nine holes 10 through 18, we're going to identify areas of need. Majority of this project will include the removal and replacement of existing damaged car paths and to a lesser extent, paving of existing gravel paths. At the completion of this program, our golfers will have a much smoother and enjoyable trip around the golf course to be sure. There will be some challenging areas to work on here, especially on holes 12 and 13, they'll have to be a little bit creative to work on that, but this is a good program, this is a, a good program in respect to car paths, generate revenue for us and it's important that we keep these in good condition and, and safe to travel in.
And last but not least is the North Avenue, Prospect Avenue Stormwater Detention Pond for which we have just received the federal funding. We are going through the federal process to select an architect or an engineer so we can begin to engineer that project. Anything else you want to add to that, Paul?
Hopefully if everything works right, we should be bidding that out sometime, hopefully late May, first part of June and see some activity out there, weather permitting, August, September of next year, hopefully for dry weather, we have a nice dry condition. Excited about that project.
Very excited, it's a great project, I've been working on it for a long time. We do have remaining projects that are not in this year's budget, they're further projects that are out farther, have been in the budget before and I can go through those if you want or, or not. They're not part of what you'll be voting on, but I'm happy to do it.
Okay. Can you just tell us what they are real quick?
I can, I'd be happy to do that. It is, first of all, the well out west, which we have had in for some time, we don't need it now, we haven't seen the development out west to generate the need for that. And then we have our MFT maintenance program for 1516, 1617 and 1718 for the streets and just identifying where we're going to spend that money. We have the IDNR bike path links that we talked about and I think you have some other links in there for the future and assault dome storage that we know we need to find another place farther out west to locate a assault dome.
All right, well, thank you very much for all of that, now comes the quiz portion of the evening. In all seriousness, unless there's any objections, we'll, we'll move it along. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Job's on the road.
And if we do get to watch the video of the sewers, are we gonna bring popcorn for that or?
I'll kind of eat it.
Okay. Thank you Chairman Ranky. Does anybody have any, Alex, for the good of the order? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting to executive session to discuss collective bargaining per section 2C2 of the Open Meetings Act.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Trustee Ranky, seconded by Trustee Aaron, so clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron? Yes. Hammer?
Yes.
Carbinero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.